Alright, thanks Joe.
I'll call the city council meeting to order is five, 5:02. Roll call please.
Feltes. Feltes.
Feltes.
Are you here?
Roll call Joe.
Are you here?
Yeah.
Say yes.
Say yeah, he just did.
I did say yes.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Fetch?
Yes.
Mazak?
Yeah.
Wosni?
Yes.
Paulston.
Alright, we have a quorum and note that Joe Feltes is available by, is on the phone. Pledge of allegiance please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, verification of most being.
Uh, the agenda was posted at city halls, Navy Bank of Arcadia, Arcadia TV and clients on the website on Friday, February 1st.
Alright, we have a thirteen item agenda to entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Fel- uh, Fetch? Is there a second?
Second.
By Mazak. Clerk will call the roll.
Feltes.
Joe?
Joe? Feltes?
Joe?
Yeah.
He said yeah.
Uh, motion, motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
It's already moved, just a yes vote please.
We're doing the roll call Joe, can we get a yes or a no?
I said yeah, so moved.
Oh, sorry. Fetch?
Yeah.
Mazak?
Yes.
And Wosni?
Yes.
Motion carries public comment. Public comment. Public comment, we have none this evening. Presentations, none. Um, what I'm gonna do is, I'm just, to move this along, I'd rather move item eight A up. Then Joe can get off the line if we can't hear. Eight A is the discussion of possible appointment of first ward alderman, Mr. Paul Anderson. Um, once he's, once he's approved and sworn in, then Joe doesn't need to be on the phone and we do have a quorum.
I'll make the motion to second.
Motion by Mazak, second by Fetch.
You need somebody to approve, so moved.
It's already approved, um, clerk will call the roll.
Mazak?
Yes.
Wosni?
Yes.
Fetch?
Yes.
And Feltes.
Feltes, a yes vote to approve Paul Anderson.
Yeah.
Alright, we can let you go now.
Alright, that's good, 'cause the traffic is heavy.
Thanks Joe.
Hang in there.
Paul, um, once, now that you have been appointed, we need to do an open office for.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, if you can stand and raise your right hand, and then, um, I'll give you this, but repeat after me.
Okay.
Um, Ifall Anderson.
Ifall Anderson. Raise your right hand. Ifall Anderson.
Having been appointed first ward alderperson.
Have been appointed first ward alderperson.
In and for the city of Arcadia.
No wonder. In and for the city of Arcadia.
Tremplin County, Wisconsin.
Tremplin County, Wisconsin.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution.
That I will support the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my set office.
Of my set office.
For the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
So help me God. And if I can get you to sign.
Congratulations.
Two copies, uh, your official.
Now, we're gonna start meeting like twice a week?
I think so.
How many times during the summer?
A lot more during baseball season.
Three times.
Only cup fans allowed.
Oh.
Forgot to say some of this stuff, Angela. Wait a minute, wait a minute here.
Can you grab those and hand them over?
Yep. Hey Mayor.
Paul, those tickets are easy to come by.
Especially at, uh, Claims Adjuster Field. I thought they were gonna recall Brewer Stadium. It's not gonna be Miller Park anymore. That's all you had, the native rights, I thought it might be like Claims Adjuster Field or something.
Why did I?
I did not hear that.
Yeah, not gonna come, but I.
Yeah.
Not Miller Stadium.
Yeah.
I did call Raleigh and expressed my condolences.
Um, there's nothing really too exciting on here, but we'll start at item, go back up the fore, thanks for moving that around, I think this will work a little easier. Um, approval of meeting minutes from January sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Just motion by Fetch, is there a second? Second.
I wasn't here.
You can still second, but you can't vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did, did you read them?
Uh, no, I didn't.
Clerk will call the roll.
Maybe I did.
Could you second those?
Mazak, or Wosni, excuse me, sorry.
Before we approve, who approved, you've been asked for questions?
Yeah, is there questions, sorry, but.
Well, there's one, just one, I don't know if it, I don't know, I don't know if it's, if it's important or not, but about halfway down the page under old business, it says there was this question on dogs in Memorial Park. And this was to be put on the agenda next month, um, that, there was no action taken, but it said next month, so I was just wondering, is it coming up in the future?
We'll probably put it on the second meeting.
Yeah, that'll, that'll come up.
Okay.
There's some language that we haven't seen kind of ordinance, and we're just cleaning that out.
Okay. That was all I did then. Any other discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
Uh, Wosni?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
You can abstain. You might want to abstain. Oh, you did? Well, you're good to go then.
Fetch?
Yes.
Mazak?
Abstain.
Alright. As long as you're reading, that's the, discussion on possible action to approve the Darian laboratories request, subdivide a parcel. Should be listed in your certified map. I think this was discussed at the last meeting that I was not at.
You want me to give a presentation before there's a?
Yes, motion.
Yep. Um, so we received a request, um, from Glenn Wright by way of the, uh, yeah, Arcadia ambulance service and, uh, John Craig of, uh, Airland survey. Um, requesting, uh, or submitting an application to subdivide a piece of property. Uh, this piece of property is to the south of Previa Health, um, the clinic on Detloch Drive. This, what would, what it would do, it would section off a piece of property, the front lots, um, of, of about point nine three acres, uh, for the ambulance shed, and the intent there is to donate that parcel to the ambulance service. Once they move forward on, um, this project. Um, by statute, uh, this item was required to go to plan commission for review and recommendation, um, that was done. I believe the plan commission meeting was held on the twenty ninth. And, um, the, the plan commission did review, uh, not only the, the certified survey map and the, the requirements, uh, related to the drafting of the map, uh, but also reviewed the site plan. Um, some, some items of concern that came up, uh, included, uh, water runoff. Um, it is under an acre, so it does not require, uh, a DNR permit, ZR water permit. Um, there was also some discussion in regards to, uh, where the electric feeds in to the building and where the transformer would be placed. Um, and then, um, I believe there's a six inch water sewer that heads just a lateral that, um, connects to the main just south of that lot. Um, and so, questions were asked about how that would be connected, uh, to the property itself. Albeit, those, those questions are not related, related to, uh, the certified survey map in itself. But those were, uh, concerns that they had. Um, there was a motion by Feltes that night and second by Dale Howard to recommend, uh, the approval of the certified survey map as proposed. I can read the, the whole motion, so, motion by Feltes, second by Howard to recommend approval of the Darian laboratories request, subdivide their property vice of the vice survey map. And that motion carried five to zero.
Excellent. Motion by Fetch.
Second that.
By Mazak. Questions? Anything that's a rezone, Paul, just to kind of bring you up to speed, everything goes to the, um, planning commission first. Planning commission kind of does their due diligence about approving it and asking a lot of questions. They don't necessarily approve, so it's called an approval, but they send it on to the council for action, they're more of an advisory. They're actually a hundred percent advisory, where none of their actions actually take, so it comes to us, so we really lean on the planning commission to be answering a lot of those questions.
So they're supposed to have more in-depth study this thing, more than what we were proud right out of the opportunity to.
Correct. Do you have some?
And those meetings, and those meetings are open, I mean, we can definitely attend those meetings and generally what we, we like to do is whether it's a rezone or whether it's a, you know, if it's an item that goes to, uh, the plan commission, what we like to do is have it come to council and have council refer it to the, the plan commission. The, the plan commission then reviews, uh, the application against, you know, city ordinances, against, um, you know, if there's any design standards, you know, um, comprehensive plan. Uh, we have, I take a look at, you know, if we have any development plans or, or like a floodplain management plan. Um, and then they provide their assessment and, and, uh, provide their recommendation back to council.
There's no other questions, the clerk will call the roll.
Interesting.
I think we got a question over here.
Well, I, I sort of had a question, I mean, so basically, to provide information to this planning commission, this gentleman over here does a, a lot of legwork.
A lot of legwork.
A lot of legwork, so he's the one who advise it and to provide the, as well as to us, the information so we can make proper decisions, so. I think that's, uh, when they say that the thing has been, uh, approved and wants to go to the city council, I think we are, uh, in, in full, uh, knowledge of what's going on there.
And they really, I mean, the planning commission has done a nice job of working, knowing what the council wants and Phil's a good advocate, knows how the council wants to, is trying to move forward, and expresses those concerns.
Like a lady's son.
And, and vice versa.
Yeah.
It's worked well.
We also, we also have Mr. Mayor there and we have, uh, Joe Feltes.
And Joe is on there.
And, uh, Gary Bouch is the president, he sits on the utility commission also.
Clerk will call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fetch?
Yes.
Mazak?
Yes.
Wosni?
Motion carries item five A, uh, plan commission possible action to appoint, uh, Ben Vasquez to the planning commission, I've spoke with Ben Vasquez. Uh, and he's expressed interest in serving on the planning commission, I did tell him that we'll be appointing him this evening, um, and he will attend the next meeting. Everybody, does anybody know who Ben is?
Yeah.
Yeah, related to somebody in the office in there?
Yes, Lindy's son.
We don't have any problem with that, no.
It's, the planning commission is simply an advisory committee and, um, obviously like, like Paul, if there was something that came up that affected, you know, internally, the planning commission would be different than having an employee, but. Use yourself for, for the discussion, just like we all would, so.
Is this the, uh, the opening that was made by your dad?
Correct.
Vacating it?
Yep.
Okay, so now it's filled, now we got a full plan.
Not quite yet, not until it's, you guys approve it first.
Well, well, we, at that time, we would have a full plan commission.
Right.
Okay.
Well, so, uh, entertain a motion to approve, motion by Fetch, second by Mazak. Clerk will call the roll.
Uh, Fetch?
Yes.
Mazak?
Yes.
Wosni?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries item five B, board of zoning appeals, uh, item one is, do we have to accept the resignation first?
Uh, yeah, you, yeah, because he was, um, appointed to a term and that term has not.
Sean, Sean Saboda, um, I suppose it was about a couple of weeks ago, uh, sent a letter of resignation, um, not wanting to serve on the zoning board of appeals anymore. Um, so first, entertain a motion to accept his letter of resignation. Motion by Mazak, is there a second?
Second.
By Wosni, clerk will call the roll.
Mazak?
Yes.
Wosni? Anderson?
Yes.
Fetch?
Yes.
Motion carries, I don't believe he really said why, but obviously he was appointed and he just no longer wanted to serve, I think. Might have served a couple of years, I appointed him when I first, first became mayor.
I think it was two years and he served.
Expressed interest, so. Item B two, uh, the possible action to appoint Tim Schultz to the, to the CE of the board of Zonin's Zone of Appeals, uh, Tim has served a number of terms as a. Alternate and has, uh, attended meetings and has done a lot of stuff, and he expressed interest as being, um, a full-time member of the zoning board of appeals. That's the appointment to appoint Mr. Tim Schultz to the zoning board of appeals.
Can I ask who he is?
Tim Schultz, um.
Which Schultz?
He lives on Ken Street?
Ron Mogas Sonoma.
Oh, across from Doors?
Yep.
I don't know the kid, but I know where he live. I know of him, but I don't.
I think he works at.
Nelson?
Nelson, I believe, he's a Walder.
Sorry, I can't help you guys.
Can't help us out on this one?
He couldn't approve, prove what I said, that she lived across from Doors.
I know, from Doors, which Doors?
Gimza.
Oh my.
Right across the street.
Across the street, on the corner there?
Oh yeah.
Remember, remember.
They talk across the street to each other.
Oh, they do, or on Smokes screens or what?
Yep, yeah. So he's been there, right, he's been an alternate?
He's been an alternate since I served on the zoning board of appeals probably ten years ago.
I'll motion to approve him, second, he's been there.
Motion by Mazak, second by Fetch. Yeah, I was probably on ten or twelve years ago.
Yeah.
And served, I think, probably six or eight years.
So he's been an alternate for a long time?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if it's just his schedule, he didn't want to be part of it and didn't, wasn't for sure. He worked second shift for a long time, and I think he's moved down to first.
And he's interested to be full, okay.
Okay, so I just want, I just want to quickly say that this, uh, the seat, uh, he, um, is, was Roger Whitechite, he had sat on that. Um, so with the resignation of, um, Sean, um, and then the appointment of Tim, we still have one empty spot.
Always still that one.
And now we have an open alternate.
Right.
Seat.
Is Dwayne still on the zoning board of appeals?
Okay. It's, it's Dwayne Matelski, um, Diana Tempski, um, Randy Rogatki, and then would be Tim Schultz. And then Mike Saboda is the alternate.
Okay, so then.
So there is, there's one permanent seat, and I'm not so sure Mike wanted to be a, would rather be an alternate just because of.
Correct. He used to be on the board.
He was on the board when he wasn't retired, now he's retired, now he's an alternate, so he's probably busier, who knows?
Well, you don't want to retire.
Right.
Look, just look at me.
So if anybody knows of anything, reach out to Bill or myself and let us, you know, let us know and we can approach him and share some information.
But they can get things done, right? With what you've got.
Yeah, yeah, there's enough.
Yeah, there's enough of our quorum.
There's four and then a fifth, you know, that, Mike's been pretty willing to serve. Entertain a motion to approve Tim Schultz.
We did.
Did we?
Yep.
Do we vote on it?
No.
Okay, call the roll, clerk will call the roll.
Wosni?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fetch?
Yes.
Motion carries, uh, department updates, we have none scheduled. And public hearing, we have none scheduled. Item eight B, discussion of possible action, dismiss the eminent domain proceeding with, uh, Howard Rushgala property.
Oh, really? I, I can give up, uh, an update, so, um, I think about this time last year, um, we went ahead to, um, bid, uh, the replacement of, the replace, uh, construction of the replacement well for Howard or Scala. Um, and that has been done, so, we, we did enter an agreement with Howard, uh, and by that agreement, I believe, um, at the time, the, the, the replacement, the construction of the replacement, um, and that agreement would be fulfilled when we provide him with a, a construction, um, report, and we provided that to him, it was, that well was tested, um, and it did pass testing. Uh, we did, um, contact DNR to, uh, discuss our obligations in regards to, uh, providing, uh, a, a replacement well and, and drinking water, and they've have, uh, emailed back and said that we've met those qual, those requirements, um, so, um, all during this time, we still have an open file in regards to the eminent domain proceeding with, uh, Tom Kiefer, who is, who was our, who is our attorney. Um, and in talking and discussing with, um, Terry Madden, um, this, the eminent domain, um, file or proceeding should technically be closed because of the matter, uh, has been resolved, not the, not the contamination issue, but the replacement of that well. Um, and I believe that was the reasoning for moving forward in the eminent domain proceeding.
So the well tested out, okay.
So this started five years ago?
Yeah. Yeah, it was before I was here.
Six years ago?
If Paul has questions or concerns, you can track down him or to get the background.
Basically, there was eminent domain proceeding that started, uh, Howard Rushgala's property, it's just in the southwest of the dump, there was some contamination that happened by the contaminants, um, traveling to the southwest, which contaminated his well, five to six years ago, maybe six years ago. Um, there was, the, the eminent domain proceeding was.
Started?
Started to acquire his forty acres of property so he wouldn't have to put a new well in. Gone through, I don't know, started a long path, Bill knows more of the history that we need to discuss now, so, anyway, this council, the current council decided that it would be best to drill a new well for him, we worked at the DNR, um, like making sure the well was proper, uh, that wasn't going to contaminate the rest of the city's water source, which was done, and that was a major concern. So we drilled the well, everything seems to be good, and we got approval from the DNR, the DNR's, wow, has tested the well, the water's good for Mr. Rushgala, so basically it's a matter.
The D, the DNR did test.
Didn't test the well, the, DNR supervised the construction, but then it's the responsibility of, uh, uh, contractor to test it.
Okay.
It, it was sent into the health department. Uh, and just to add to that, when we, when we, when the council, um, decided to move forward drilling the well, they, they did take a look at a number of different options, uh, related to it, so.
So the well's been drilled, it's gone through all the proper channels, the next step is to dismiss the.
Be done.
Eminent domain, because it's no longer needed.
There's a still possibility in the future that it could be.
At, at any time, you could start an eminent domain.
Yeah, that.
Proceeding, but you don't want, me personally, I wouldn't want something hanging like that over my forty acre property. Motion?
Motion.
I'll motion. Motion by Wosni, is there a second? By Fetch?
But discussion, um.
Go ahead.
There's, there's still a possibility if there is some contaminant, in the future, this possibility of, could be contaminated again, couldn't it?
They're in a different aquifer. This, this well is actually.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, this well is actually into the Mount Simon aquifer, the same aquifer that we get our, our well from.
Yeah.
I believe that contaminant is in the groundwater, and, and we did a lot of research into it, um, in the flume, you know, and, and that goes back to. Now more detailed conversations that I, I dare to get into tonight, but, um, but yeah, no, that, that well that is drilled is grouted, um, all the way down to the Mount Simon. Um, and, um, we should not have any contamination issues, if we do, we have a larger issue.
Clerk will call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fetch?
Yes.
Mazak?
Yes.
Wosni?
But during that discussion, I went back to a lot of the science that Mr. Anderson taught me back in the day. All those things about rocks, you didn't think you'd ever use, you started, I started, it all started to click again.
Rocks?
Yep. Not just between the ears, Doc. Item eight C, discussion of possible action to issue a request for proposal for the recycling services.
Um, so just quickly, um, so in your, in your packet, you should have a draft, uh, request for proposal for recycling services. Um, if you remember, I impol, for your, um, for your knowledge here, so the city council, um, had voted to, um, add on to, uh, the April elections, a question of whether or not, uh, we should add, uh, curbside thingless or recycling, or pickup, um, for a fee and not have, uh, uh, tax levy affected by that. Um, by, so, um, in doing that, uh, at a previous meeting, um, council had requested that we find out what it could potentially cost, uh, for this service, so that we may educate, um, the voters. And so this is a draft of the RFP to go out, it is contingent on, uh, referendum passing. Um, the idea here would be to try to get it out as soon as possible, now, this is a draft, we do have a draft over with attorneys, um, and so I would imagine there, there may be some changes, but we want to try to get this out as soon as possible so that we can get responses back, um, mid-March, so that we can get that information out to, um, the general public. Um, so what we're asked, what, what we're asking here is that, um, you approve us staff to go ahead and advertise this, uh, for bids, uh, once we get the response back from the city attorney.
And if simply just for bids, there'd be no action taken until the referendum in April. And the reason this is being done is because we've never charged for collection services of recycling previously, and if we would be charging for it now, we'd have to reduce our budget, and that's due to Act Ten, which went into effect. Probably six years ago? Six, eight, eight years probably.
Eight years.
So, there's just a lot of guidelines that we have to follow.
So this would, uh, not necessarily go to Hilltop or right, I mean, somebody, we gotta put it out the bed.
Correct.
There might be other recyclers that might want to come in, probably, yes, maybe, you know.
Correct.
But, uh, and the idea also includes, I haven't read this, 'cause I just got this stuff, but, uh, including, uh, containers?
Correct, the containers is listed in.
It is listed in.
So, so what the RFP does is it requests, um, it gives the option, um, for whoever is, is submitting the bid to provide, um, I believe it's, it's, I want to say a sixty-four gallon container or a smaller tote, or like a sixteen gallon tote, but you would have to, a tote you would have to pick up regularly, whereas the sixty-four gallon would be bi-weekly.
The ones that, like, when you go across Hunter's Bridge and you get up into that area, you got the totes up by the road, how much, how big are they?
Those are sixty-four.
Those are sixty fours, okay, that's easy enough to handle.
So the, the.
On your way to look Holmanville on Highway fifty-three.
Ah, okay.
You don't know where Hunter's Bridge is, I'm sorry.
You need to look by the trailer car.
Oh, okay, I, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't.
You know where the trailer car is right there.
I didn't mean it that way.
I thought he lived in Holman once.
Yeah, he still doesn't know where Hunter's Bridge is.
The Black, across the Black River.
Yeah.
Between Galesville and Golf Course.
You know where the Black River is.
Yep.
Okay, but, so yeah, it just does give options.
So, if you, uh, if you have any changes or recommendations, um, you know, this week or next week, do try to get them to me. Um, I would imagine that we would put it in a couple of county times, just probably send a notice over there on Wednesday. Um, and then, uh, put it on our website and, and then we'll individually email them out to all the carriers.
And most of them know, they follow the minutes, so they know what's, they, they know what we're looking at. There was a motion, sorry, I'm alone.
So we have.
Motion by Fetch, is there a second?
Second.
By Anderson. Comments, questions, more?
So there is a, a, people will know what they can put in there, I noticed there was something about ones and twos, maybe more than ones and twos, uh, maybe up to fives or something like that.
Three to seven.
Yeah, he gives them the opt.
Oh, three to seven?
Oh, where's, oh, okay. I think the, the way that is worded is they give them the option to, to add that.
Eight sixteen.
Well, Doc, the question you asked is would basically be us deciding now what we want to have as a service.
Oh, okay.
This is, this is really for the contractor of what they're going to supply and at what cost. So once we decide. So once we decide on a service, we would say what numbers we would want that contractor, what, what we would require that contractor.
And then they charge accordingly.
Correct.
Sixteen to nineteen.
This is more than what we were used to seeing, isn't it? When Bob was up there.
There's no other questions, clerk will call their own.
Very fine.
Fatch?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Wajni?
Yep.
Anderson?
Yeah.
Item eight D discussion, a possible action to adopt resolution two thousand nineteen dash two, and then the resolution two thousand nineteen dash one. Resolution for levy limit referendum for curbside recycling.
I, I guess I will take that, um, you guys adopted a resolution in January, which will place the question on the ballot in April, but the way the referendum. The way that it was listed in the original resolution, there was a lot of wording before the question that says shell the city. And in talking with Terry and Paul Seaverston of the county, uh, they thought we should shorten that up. Because the wordier you make something, the more confusing, more confusing people can get. And so this second resolution kinda tightens up exactly what we'll be asking on the ballot, um.
Does that make sense? Motion to approve.
So?
Motion by Fatch, is there a second? By Wajni, clerk will call their own.
Mezek?
Yes.
Wajni?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yep.
Fatch?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eight D discussion, a possible action to adopt versions two thousand nineteen dash one, a ordinance relating special events. Bill can kinda give us an update, what this is.
Sure.
If we're looking exactly for approval tonight, as some other groups still wanna meet in regards to it and give some more input, but I think we discussed it in October. So, Bill, you can give us a little update on it.
Yeah, so we uh, the, had, the initial draft of this ordinance came up in October at that time, um, council reviewed it and I believe there was a request. Uh, to, to table the ordinance, um, so that uh we may figure out uh an agreement, uh particularly between. The city and Ashley for the Arts at that time, and Cole was at that meeting, um, also. Um, since that time, we did make some changes, we, we, um, um, what we did was we tightened up the ordinance uh to make it. Um, so that it would um be more friendly to event holders or, or organizers. Um, and also, um, we did make a change in the language, believe uh the specific language previously. Um, had required that there be a standing agreement between the city and the, uh, event organizer. Um, to, to be in effect, uh, if they did not want to be regulated by the, the ordinance. We've now changed that to have, to um state that the organizer may have um an, an agreement, so it doesn't. Dictate that you have to have a standing agreement, um, which allows the city to enter an agreement, um, with an event holder in the future. Um, and regulate it by, by agreement instead of by ordinance. Um, so again, uh, it's come up again in, in council here, uh, for your review, uh, there has been a request. Um, from, um, multiple groups uh within the community uh to table this so that they would have uh an opportunity to review it. Uh, this would be the second time that the council would ta- would table this, um, and, um. What staff is hopeful for is that we have an ordinance, um, to provide kind of a even playing ground or equal level. Field for, um, for any event holder that, or organizer that would come in. Um, and it, it is starting to get in that time where, where events are being organized.
So I guess I'd just, I'd like to probably put it on the first week, first meeting in May, or excuse me, March. I think um Lions Club meets the end of February, which would be after, it'd be after our meeting.
First and third, is that what they?
Just, well, in the summer they do it.
Let's just say Mar- let's just say the March meeting, just in case we don't have time to get to some of their, um, their president chairperson.
So my, uh, barn alopec for sons of Norway, want to just have a little ski race for kids out there. Is this not a special event?
Well, the special event is defined, and you can read it, um.
Right, I see.
But if, you know, if it, if it's not outside the parameters of what.
The normal park.
The normal park use is, or if it doesn't spill over, you know, or if it doesn't require.
Oh, I see.
Extra city services, then we would not consider it a special event.
Cole, do you want to add something?
No, I just think that there's, um, some opportunity just to define it, I think the March date would give adequate time. Um, not only for some community members, but also adequate time for your, the city's purposes to implement this. Uh, for summer events or for, for large events, I think a one-month table. I just don't know how to find, um, if it's outside of regular use, it is in the contract, if there's some interpretation. I think just a few more tweaks I would, I would recommend, or it is in the contract, but it's up to the city, city council, so.
You move back there a day. I share that with him often, so.
So regular use like skiing and skating and all, that's just.
Right, yeah, yeah, if you're gonna get twenty people to play a basketball game that's gonna be on the course up there, that's considered a limited use and. Mind you, this is, this is all parks in general, you know, we look at just.
All parks and.
Parks and just usage of city services that are outside the event.
So I'll, I'll give an example, so.
Go ahead, just wait, Paul had a question.
You maybe are gonna, I was gonna say, what are our examples of it besides Ashley for the Arts and, uh, earlier days?
So, so for example, we have a, we, we have a group that hosts uh basketball tournaments uh at our park. Uh, and when they're there, there, there's a lot of peo- a lot of people there and requires additional uh waste services, uh latrines, bathroom, porta potties. Um, you know, they, they explicitly use the basketball uh for the whole day and, uh, I believe it's weekly that they have that.
Correct.
So.
They have tournaments multiple times during the summer.
Correct, and so, um, that would be considered a, a special event because it's an elongated event. Um, and it, it limits the use of the park for that time of day. Now compared to say a, um, basketball tournament at the school, where the school. Um, you know, was built for uh hosting those type of tournaments, where the parking is, is. Whether it's street parking or whether it's, it's private parking, doesn't require the city to close down any streets. Doesn't require any additional, uh, traffic service, uh, traffic, uh, patrol. Uh, doesn't require, um, for the city to, uh, go up and go in and clean, clean up afterwards. And that's not, that's not a special event, that's within the confines of, of the school's, uh, programming.
We also had a number of, I don't know, I don't think they had it this last summer, but they used to have a street, street dance down here on Grant Street. The block off the street, now they take care of, um, we would take care of, you know, ordering porta potties. Road blockage, uh, extra police protection other than the one, the one night. There are the one officer that we have on all the time, um, I think there's like a bar mini golf. They, they require, they request some more officers during that time. So just, just to get an idea of what is happening and how many people are coming in, so the city can be prepared and not. Not have five hundred people at a place and have one bathroom, we wanna best, make our city look the best. Both ways.
So he mentioned basketball tournaments, softball tournaments would be the same thing.
Yep, and if it's not city, like if the city was running the league, but a lot of these league, the people coming in and utilizing it, but the city's not running the league. Like slow pitch softball, you know, a lot of times we ran the slow pitch softball tournament, so we knew the amount of people that were coming in. And we planned it that way, cause it was ran through the park directly.
Yeah, and, and the way that the, the ordinance is set up is, is that, you know, there's, there's an emphasis on that initial meeting with the city. You know, if, if it's determined, if there's an initial meeting, if you, if you believe that you have a special event and you have an initial meeting with, with the city. And we come to find out that you don't need any city services, or there's ways to, to change, uh, the, the event so that. It, it wouldn't need a, a permit, and that can be decided at, at that moment. Uh, it, it's not, you know, it, it's, it's. What the ordinance really does is it gets, it gets the event organizer in the city to be able to meet and discuss and have a positive amount of communication in regards to this. Uh, it's, it's the, it's the events that we don't know of, um, you know, that takes place over a weekend and then. We come back to the office Monday morning of and, and, you know. The, the phones are ringing off of it because of something that's going on.
Like dances at the Little Pavilion, would that be an, an example of one too?
I don't know what that.
I would say no.
No?
Okay, that's more like a wedding birthday party type event, which would not get considered. It's special for the people that's happening, or if it's not a special event in our eyes.
What about the, uh, soccer tournaments that Luises does?
They have an agreement.
Yeah, they already have an agreement. So we'll just try to put it out in the March meeting, might be the first meeting, it'll be the second meeting later in the month, just depending where Cole and people from the Lions Club. Take any actions necessary at this time.
Covers all basins, basically.
Well, you always try to do that, however.
You, you know, the, with, as with any other ordinance, you, you know, there, there are things that do kinda, you know, crop up. You know, there's different types of events all the time, um, things that we may not even consider. Um, but it, it, again, the important thing about this ordinance is, is trying to get. A meeting together and, and talk about the events and, you know, have the city be in a situation where the city can help. Make, you know, help make that.
Make their event successful as long as it be a success for the city.
So the idea is for communication, and communication before the event happens and all that.
Correct.
Some people know what to do.
It, it has gotten better, I will say that, over the last couple of years, it has, starting to know more about what events are, they know what's going on, but.
How has this information gotten out to the promoters? They got, they, hopefully we'll check with the city first, perhaps?
Well, well, in October, uh, we, we sent, uh, we had, uh, posted with the agenda, the, the draft of the, um, amendment, I mean, the, the ordinance. Uh, again, we did send an email out, uh, with the draft to, uh, to Cole and to the organizers of the, um. Early days event. Um, if this does pass in the future, what the ordinance, the summary of the ordinance will be, uh, provided to the Central County Times, just with any other ordinance. We have to go to a, a publication of it.
And as far as like the Hispanic community, I've, uh, reached out to Luis, who's organizer of United for a Dream, as well as the soccer. Obviously, they're still, um, they, they still have an agreement, but they're aware of it. I've met with the people that run the basketball league multiple times as well, um, I guess we just met a couple weeks ago, so, so they know what's going on. They, they kinda just want some sort of guidance as well of, of what they gotta do and what we're requesting as far as utilizing our facilities, so.
Yeah, and if, 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 uh, the ordinance does pass, you know, if they come in for like a picnic permit or, or any kind of permit in re- in regards to a special event. Um, staff will then inform them, we can put it on our website, um, multiple things that we can do, we can put it in their newsletter too.
When you talked to Luis, he, I talked to him a bit. Up on, uh, East End, and he said he, they were, they were thinking of moving in from August to July, you know anything about that?
Yeah.
About that, okay.
The only reason it was in August, United for a Dream this year was because I was one of the ladies here, they were gonna have a quinceañera up there. And that was the only day that the, uh, Pavilion was open. So she canceled her quinceañera and they had United for a Dream.
Cause I sent them the slip.
They definitely did not wanna follow Cole's event. That I know. And I know the police department run, doesn't really want them to follow, ask for the arts either, but it, it worked out well, it's a good event, so. So we'll, we'll get to sometime in March. Item nine A approved bills of general count came out to three hundred thirty-six thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars and forty-three cents. And a state of motion to approve.
So.
Motion by Wajni, second, but there's, questions?
I, I have one, I don't know if anybody else does, um. D V Engineering submitted a, a bill for six hundred forty-two sixty-seven for monitoring. And Stan Tech Counseling Services monitoring for twenty-six hundred fourteen dollars. Um, it was the, the sixth or seventh one down on the second page, and then the other one's about, not quite halfway down the page, under D V Engineering. I was just wondering, two monitorings, um, is that, is that standard?
Yeah, so they kinda team up on that, Stan Tech is like, I think, a company out of, uh, like Twin Cities. And so when D V's here, they do, um, so there's two different, um, parts to the monitoring, there's, there's kinda the wildlife and then there's the.
That has to be done because of the D N R per- permit we did.
Army, yeah, U S Army Corps permit. Um, so there's monitoring of, of, uh, like wildlife, fishery habitat, um, that someone physically has to be here to do. And then there's the hydraulic, hydraulics, analysis and monitoring of that, for which I believe Stan Tech does. Now we, uh, the permit requires that we monitor that, that creek for, uh, three years. We just completed our third year, um, so we've put in the request to the Army Corps to see if we can stop monitoring. And do a delineation and see if there's been any wetland impacts, we don't, I don't believe that there has been, I have the report upstairs.
But it's three years of normal.
Three years of normal rainfall.
Well, we know that the last three years have been bad.
And we're making, we're making that argument because we're looking at it, you know, through the whole year.
Over the course of a year.
Over the course of the year, instead of just, uh, the, um, the summer moment, right.
Refresh my memory, how many times is it, how many times a year are they doing this, or is it just one time a year?
So it's, it's an initial, um, um, study or, or delineation, and then it's a monitor for three full seasons. And then after the third full season, they have to do a, a delineation also.
I mean, per year.
How often do? Per year?
How many times are they doing?
I don't, off the top of my head.
Okay, well, that's, I, I just a question I have, that's all.
He can send you an email.
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, I'll stop now, if you, someday when you, no.
I can bring that, if you want the report, I have it on.
No, 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 that's, I just, I'm, I'm just curious as to how often it's done, that's all.
Well, I can.
At some time I'll stop, I'll see you Tuesday, I'll stop in and we can look at it Tuesday.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you.
Doc, does the, uh, the gutter replacing on City Hall, uh, done any good?
I believe it has, uh, well, we haven't had a rain in then, since then, uh, so what that is, is, um.
We've had rain.
So we have a flat rough, a pitch rough, oh, it kinda pitches down this way, um. And we had the gutters replaced on this side, um, which would be the west side. And that's, that's where it's, um, but then the water on this side, we found out that there's a kinda a trough above where the police door is. And, um, when the rainwater comes down, it kinda pours down that side and so it. We now have it, um, being directed to the back of the building and down to the ground, um, and.
That should help though.
Well, it's not raining on the police officers anymore.
Well, who can?
No. That's good.
That's good, that's good.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Clerk will call their own.
Wajni?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fatch?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, operator licenses?
We have none.
I didn't see any.
I don't see any on there.
Future agenda items?
Are we skating rink, are we, we're supposed to be?
By the sounds of it, we might be able to skate right past your house tonight.
You think?
Yeah, according to this guy here.
Yeah, I almost fell down on the sidewalk.
That's what he was saying.
I thought maybe you had ice skating rink up there. We're working on, I'm just driving around today when I was, uh, uh, going back and forth to, to, uh, do the grooming out of the park. And, uh, looking at all the, the areas where the water runoff, we've got multiple areas of skating rinks right now.
You know, maybe that's a good, I mean. You know, maybe that's a good, I mean, probably not tomorrow's going to be a good thing, but get with Raleigh and see where you can scout out a path. Maybe that's a good flat spot to look at.
Yeah, well, we were, Joe mentioned something brought down by, by our church there in Schultz Park, you know, that place.
Didn't they use to skate on that pond?
Yeah, but there's so many springs.
You, you, you trip up yourself, you can't, there's too many weeds.
There's cups, well, it's not maybe all that, but there, there's cracks and you got to watch, you got to keep cleaning and then you got to fill those cracks, in other words, you got to pump up and, and flood it. Whereas years ago, I don't know if they were flooded, but you got to keep it clean, but there's so many springs, we're all, just jumped his tractor into there.
Like in Winona, we skated right on the lake.
Yeah, but the thing is.
I mean, really, before we get off topic, because it's not on there.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's not on there, John.
But we could, I mean, we could, a surefire way to do it would be to talk to them and if they're somewhere down by, by Schultz Park.
Well, where, I like, I still like it up by where we're going to almost hold the Barna Lopet here, the ski race, up on the north end of the barbecue get there. Because it's pretty much flat already, and I talked to, uh, one of the constructor boys, Hot and Wild, Sokol's Doug. But that's, that's not a, we should talk about later, but the thing is, oh, we could get it done before.
May?
Or else we'll have to get it done during the summertime to get.
That might be a good thing to do, you know, right away in the, the spring, then you got the grass that can grow all year round long. It's not starting at, as a mud state, you know, like it would be now.
Yeah, you got to get it opened up and then you got to get it leveled and then you got to get it planted and then you could, so you could mow the grass and all that sort of thing.
I think Cole has some ideas about leveling some ground too, so. Maybe we can make it all work together.
Is that?
We'll discuss it sometime at another meeting.
Mr. Glacier or what?
Future agenda items, if there are any, or Paul, just contact myself or Bill or Angela and we can put it on the agenda.
Okay.
The right, next regulars, monthly meeting is the twentieth, which will be right here at five o'clock.
We talked about a, a, a future joint meeting with the library board.
Yeah, what works for them, is there something out there or?
Well, they have a meeting next Wednesday at six. We are getting pretty close to, um, the final draft of the library lease agreement, which is the last obligation under the library construction contract. They're moving pretty fast with that project and we've been a part of, of that discussion as we, as things move forward.
And we meet at six?
They meet at six.
Next, next Wednesday?
I, I should be able to attend, if, if I'm not, I can call it.
Where?
They're meeting at the, the State Bank Building.
Where?
At the.
Conference Room?
Yeah, at the State Bank.
Oh.
But we could, we could have it here.
Yeah, or down at the utility building anyway.
But what I would like to do is go.
Is court, so not down.
Oh, not down there.
What I would like to, we'll, we'll have to check with the PD to see if they're using this room or.
They got courts, so they're probably not, they don't do training that.
But what I would like to do is, 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 um, go through that lease agreement with you, it's fifty some pages. But so that you and, and the library board have a general understanding of it. It's pretty, it's, it's in depth, and, um, again, Terry and I have been working on it, we've been, and Rob's been a part of it. We've had Alva and we had Jenny as part of it, and we've been going back and forth between the school, district of Lance and their attorney, so.
So is it all pretty much written up?
It is very, very close, I would say.
Maybe, could we get a copy of that before we would meet, so we could look at it?
I mean, really, I think they sent the red line back to us Monday, last week, late last week.
Yeah, so there was a red line, but last week, there was two red lines and then I, we've, I've gotten those resolved, so.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have it in our hands, that's it, you know, even if you can get it out tomorrow or Friday.
Yeah, fifty pages, that's a lot of stuff.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't expect.
I was going to say.
We're not going to do it one night.
You don't get it, you know.
Would it be appropriate to have a summary instead of the whole thing?
I can put together a summary, they kind of hit on the.
Make it easier?
Hit on, hit on the main points, yeah.
Yeah, instead of going through all of it, which is a lot of, uh, uh, lawyeries, if you want to call it that.
There is a lot of lawyeries. But, I mean, but there's a lot of nuts and bolts in it as well.
If, if you do something, don't send it to me, I'll just come up, pick it up, just give me a call, it's ready. That's too much work for her.
Anyone else?
Yeah, me too, I suppose my wife will.
Send it to me if you want, I'll work.
It's at the library board, so my wife would probably get a copy of.
They'll say, you just send out with an email and that gets you out.
Yeah, and we have, um, service shows that, um, you can build as a.
Some of us.
I sent it over to Jenny and, okay, I leave it there.
Bob, yeah, ask Bob, he's.
Send me a copy.
I tried, I tried not to.
Bob gave us back.
They called.
Well, you sent me the other day.
No, that was her.
Does next Wednesday work if it works for the library board?
I think so.
Like six?
If, that's the time of their meeting.
Well, how long is their meeting, the last, we don't, hour, two hours?
It would basically, I would imagine it'll be basically.
Well, we can get in touch with them and, and shoot an email or give you guys a call.
Yeah, even if it's six thirty, if they have other stuff they want to take care of first. They've been accommodating to come to our meetings at our time, so maybe this time we can go on their night and their time. Because I think, a lot of times they've always made the five o'clock for us.
Yeah, one, 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 one New Year's.
Court, oh.
One, because then she can pick it up on her Game Boy.
Upstairs.
But, uh, that's what I call them. Well, I got a story when we're done.
If there's no other questions, I think a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mezek, second by Wajni. You can never have, never have to ask twice for a motion to adjourn.
You got to be quick on that one, Paul.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fatch?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Yes. We were all.